So let me call them, you need to order at 7:03. And I think that I will seat the regular members that are here. So we have all of our regular members here. And so if you would just identify yourselves, please, starting with Karen.
Karen Copter, member.
Bill Davies, member.
Margaret Barter, member.
Nancy Schoenholdt, member.
Steve?
Steve Byer. I think I'm an alternate or a member. I don't know.
Alternate, I think.
Yeah.
So let... Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of the public hearing and the special and the regular meeting on August 18th, 2022?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt. Margaret?
Second.
Karen, second. Okay, just any discussion? Any changes? Okay, we'll keep them close because we're going to talk about them. So all in favor of adopting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, so we don't have a, we don't have any applications this month. I just wanted to update you on what happened after our meeting on August 18th, which was the, which was the issue that Greg Kava had brought on behalf of the Demoyes on Moosehorn Road. And then subsequent to that, Margaret requested that we discuss the matter related to the second case that we heard that night, which was the, the case on River Road and the issue of fences and walls. So I would entertain a motion to add to the agenda. Margaret, do you want to make your motion?
The motion would be that the ZBA consider sending a letter to the zoning commission, asking for clarification of its definitions of walls and fences. I included, I sent a draft of the letter out. I don't know if you all have it. But the motion would be that, the motion would be that we consider sending them a letter on that topic. And then when we want to consider it, we can be sure I can read the letter or you all may have it.
Okay, so let's, the motion is to add that item to the agenda.
Right.
Any just, do I have a second? Do I have a second, Julie?
No, I haven't heard anything.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Pardon?
All in favor? All in favor of adding the item to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So let me just start with the first item. As you may recall, at the last meeting, Greg Kava had brought on behalf of his clients an interpretation of the, the, I'm sorry, sections 3.10.6 and 3.10.7. And Greg was essentially arguing that an expansion outside of the setback, if the entire expansion was outside the setback, that lateral expansion was permitted. He was arguing that Gail had mistakenly interpreted the regs. So what we decided to do was, since Gail was not available, was we decided to wait until Gail was available to discuss it with her. So we held it over. When Gail came back, she and I talked, but in the middle of all of this, Greg sent a request to zoning, asking for an interpretation of his understanding of the regs. Zoning then declined to put it on their agenda because there was, because the matter was before the ZBA. So everybody talked to everybody, and it was Gail's recommendation that Greg advised his clients to withdraw the applica, the, the application from ZBA in order to allow it to go to zoning for an interpretation of the regs. So that was why the, the application to us was withdrawn. And then last Tuesday, the zoning commission met. So in between that, the zoning commission asked Gail for an opinion on Greg's interpretation of the regs, which Gail then offered to the zoning commission. And that's all on their website, and we can also send you copies of, of, of her interpretation. But basically, Gail agreed with Greg that if the entire expansion was outside of the nonconformity, that there was nothing that precluded a lateral expansion.
I'll have a question.
Wait, let me finish, though. So, so last Tuesday, the zoning commission discussed it. Greg was there. He presented his interpretation. They had Gail's opinion. They had a long discussion about it, and they decided that they agreed with Greg and Gail. That.
And Gail?
I'm sorry.
Greg and Gail.
And Gail, that a lateral expansion, as long as it was completely outside the nonconformity, they interpreted zoning reg. I printed everything out, and what did I do with this one? 310.72. They interpreted, they interpreted, interpreted it to mean that lateral expansion of noncon, of a nonconforming dwelling outside of the setback is allowed. So they, they passed a motion to that effect. Now, there's two caveats to it, which they didn't put, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that they didn't put in the motion, but they didn't put in the motion, but they spoke to it. This is by special permit, which means the request, the Moosehorn request, let me just, let me just see who these. Julie, can you identify the two people who have joined?
I cannot.
Okay.
James? We can ask, James, can you please unmute yourself and identify yourself, please?
Hi, I'm James Nelson.
Okay, and 453954, please identify yourself.
Sue Scott.
Okay.
Sue.
Sue, and James, did you get his, did you get?
James Nelson.
Nelson.
Okay. Okay, so the two caveats that are on this are, it's by special permit, which means that the Greg, on behalf of the Demoyes, will, will, will file a request for a special permit to zoning. So they decided that this is not something, Gail's recommendation was that this is not something that the CEO can approve on his own, because the 25% setback requires a special permit. So this will also require a special permit. And the second caveat is that the 25% applies to this expansion. So their, their position is that the 25% is sacrosanct, whether it's inside or outside of the nonconformity, which would mean, my understanding of this is, which would mean that if somebody wanted to do more than 25%, they would have to come to us for a variance, and we would have to consider it. But the, the zoning commission really, really reaffirmed several times that for them, the 25% is the, is really the sacrosanct number, and that they, in their discussion, they talked about and reminded everybody that this was really not to allow massive expansion. It was to allow things like people who were, who had small houses and wanted a bathroom or bedroom on the first floor, because they couldn't get to the second floor anymore to allow for that. But it was not intended to, to, to allow for massive or even major expansion. So that's what happened. So that matter is no longer in front of us. I'm assuming that Greg will, has or will file for a special permit to zoning. And so those issues, the lateral expansion outside of the nonconformity will not come to us anymore. Margaret?
Yeah. First of all, I agree with the wonderful news that we won't get those applications anymore. But my question is, the application came to us referencing the new 25% that you get for free. I think you are supposed to go before zoning, but you get it for free in the back. And my understanding was, and certainly, I think in one other case, the applicant was saying, we ought to be able to apply that 25% to a lateral extension. And the, I think, and I think it does not apply to an extension in the front setback, the way the, the, the way it's written, because what Greg did with his sharp eyes was to go down and look and say, the way this is written, you, you allow it into the lateral setback, not, I think, the front setback. So my question is, has the zoning said that, under their rules, you get, you get kind of a, a pretty good chance, you know, a kind of pro forma public hearing, if you're doing a lateral extension using your 25% allowance, which you couldn't use in the back for some reason? Or are they saying?
They, they're not, they haven't spoken to that at all.
Well, but that's, this is important. Are they saying, because this may come to us, are they saying you can do any lateral extension as long as it doesn't go into the setback area, the nonconforming area? So I'm not sure if they're referring only to an application to do a lateral extension what, using the 25%, or if he's, they're referring to any lateral extension. And I, I guess my question to them also would be, you keep talking about lateral extension. Apparently, you're not talking about an extension into the front setback.
That's correct.
I just have, I just have questions on what exactly they mean. And if we get an application for a lateral extension for a variance, and it's not, doesn't come as an appeal from the 25%, it comes in from another way, do we treat those as we did in the past?
Okay, so I'm going to put that aside for a minute. So let's, let's finish the discussion on what they did say, and then we'll go back to what they didn't say. How's that? I want to know if there are any questions about what I just reported on in terms of their, their interpretation of expansions outside of the setback.
Well, I think, for me, I always would think that the interpretation is that suggested place for the expansion is behind the house. And if they're going to do a lateral expansion, they would almost have to prove a hardship to do that lateral expansion, I believe, right? I mean, is that where we're going down that road? And if they can't increase the nonconformity in any fashion, I guess that's what we're looking at, so.
So in this case, and in the case on 199, the expansion was, the lateral expansion was outside of the setback. That was all they spoke to. The question Greg's question dealt with, outside the setback. And, and so did the, the bearishers' application on 199, and I, I want to just talk about whether we need to notify them of this decision. So in this case, they won't have to prove a hardship, because it's not a variance. They'll, they'll just go for, by special permit to zoning, as long as the entire lateral expansion is outside of the setback area.
Even if.
And, and, and also under 25%, correct?
25% or under.
Yeah, all right, so that.
Exactly.
But not any lateral extension, just using the 25% standard.
Outside the setback.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Sorry?
Karen, sorry.
Oh, just, so, so let's say something came to us that was a lateral expansion of, you know, 35% or more than 25%. Under what circumstances would we be permitted to grant that?
It would then have to prove a hardship, which would be very hard to prove.
For the, excuse me, for Karen's question, for the whole thing, let's say they asked for 35%. Would they have to prove a hardship just to get their 10%? Or they said, okay, we'll go with the 25%, they get it.
I don't know.
Well, that's, I think that's, I think once you go beyond the 25%, it's, it's 35%. You don't, you don't get 25 and 10. If you get, the reality is, it's a new application. It comes before us, and they're going to have to prove hardship, and it's going to have to be an extensive hardship. Like, I feel the last house had a lot of hardships with the wood, with the water course and everything else in the back, and that was sort of their avenue, but I don't know. I mean, that's, I think that's, that's the thing. The 25% is, I think, almost makes it almost impossible for us to prove anything above 25%.
Right, that's how it feels as well.
Which makes this board obsolete.
That's my question, also, the same as Bill and Karen are raising. What about applications, if they go beyond the 25%?
I didn't hear you.
Did you have a question?
No, I was just listening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we go on to the larger questions that you're raising, do we want to notify the applicants from 199, on, on, on 199, the bearishers? Because essentially, their case was also entirely behind the setback. What was different about theirs was, it was more than 25%, but they have the option to do it at 25% if they wanted. And I'm just thinking that maybe Julie ought to just notify Peter Talbot once the minutes are available. Julie, I take it the minutes were not yet available?
Were, I checked today.
So, once the minutes are available with the motion in it, I'm just thinking maybe Julie should just apprise Peter Talbot of, of that and let him know that they can go to zoning for a special permit, but it has to be 25%. Sure. Do people concur with that?
I think, I think that's a good idea. I think, I think definitely.
It's definitely the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so now back to the other question. I, they didn't, that, that question wasn't before them. We can put it before them if we want.
Which one?
The questions that you're raising about what happens if the, there is a request for a lateral expansion inside the setback of 25% or per, or, or a rearward expansion of 25% or of greater than 25%.
Greater than, yeah.
Greater, right.
I mean, yeah, I think we should ask the question, but I think it goes back now. It's, now that is the real hardship, right? Why do they need more than 25%? What's the hardship in topography, whatever else, and then we go from there?
It could, because as you said, and that 25% is just like maybe a powder room or something, you know?
Well, I need one.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, or a porch or some, you know, it's not a lot.
It's on the size of the house. It's 25% of the footprint, isn't it?
It's 25% of the size of the footprint.
Yeah, it could be. If you have a large house, it's not so bad, right? Got a 6,000 square foot house, now you got, that's not a bad addition.
Right.
Part of the question would be, you really mean the sideline setback, because that's what Greg focused on. They are particularly referencing sidelines. Do they really, are they talking about the sideline setback only? Or are they also, I think so, but just to be sure, that they're not talking about the front setback?
I think their assumption is that, that there are no expansions to the front.
Okay. Okay.
Period. Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I, I mean, I guess there's a more sophisticated way, but basically, I think the question is, you know, under what circumstances, you, you know, what, what kind of authority do we have to grant a lateral extension greater than 25% within, a lateral extension within the setback of greater than 25%?
I feel like we know the answer.
What is?
They have to prove.
Which is not, right.
I don't, I don't know what else zoning is going to tell us besides that.
Well, what, but how could somebody, what hardship could you have that would, you, you, it couldn't be geographic, you know? You can't be, I need more than 25% because of the topography.
But that's, but that's not zoning's hardships are not, so hardships are not zoning's purview. There are purview. They're, they're not going to tell us what can and can't be a hardship, but that's.
But isn't that the really, basically, the only hardship that we are, we are legally permitted to accept is topography?
So, but we could just ask them, would they verify, validate, tell, our assumption is, or your conclusion is, X, do they agree? You know, we may think, we may know, but it doesn't hurt to ask to be sure they agree with us.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't want to be obtuse, but I, I don't know what we're asking them.
Okay.
What are we?
I think what we're talking about is, that from what I, what my, what I'm gathering, that you can, regardless of the setback, the 25% back, they say that laterally, you could build 25%. So the que, I, the question is, can they ever build over 25% regardless of the facts?
Right. Right.
And then, you know, as was said before, then we're out of business, because all the answers are sort of there.
If a house is. If a house is.
Go ahead, Nancy.
If a house is nonconforming.
Can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
If a house is nonconforming, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. The house is nonconforming, zoning has, has a regulation that they can increase by 20, they can increase their footprint by 25% and build in the back.
Right.
Right? Now, we're, we've come up with, you can increase your footprint by 25% of a nonconforming property as long as you don't go into the setback. Is that right?
Laterally.
Laterally. Laterally, okay.
And you can, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Into the setback.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, coming, sort of coming in midstream.
Because Nancy, previously, we were on, we were, felt that we were bound by, that it could only be in the back.
Right.
And it couldn't be lateral. Now, they've said, oh, okay, you know, given these circumstances, you can go lateral.
As long as.
Well, I don't know, I, I.
Right?
But it only can be if the expansion is not in the setback.
Right, that's right. That's what I just said. Right, so we're, but so they're, but they're basically, they're still increasing the nonconformity of a house, is that right?
Yeah. No.
Because it's not in the setback.
It's not in the setback, so it does not increase the nonconformity.
Okay, so the nonconformity is going to be limited to where it's nonconforming, not the whole house. Right? It's not the whole house is nonconforming. It's just a portion of the house that's in the setback that's nonconforming.
Yes, in some cases, the whole house is in the setback. But in these cases, it wasn't.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Margaret?
Yeah, Nancy touched on a question that's been on my mind. I thought we might ask Gail at some point. In a, on a nonconforming property, is the house itself nonconforming? Is the only nonconformity that the size of the property, or is the house itself a nonconforming structure? That if you add on to it, there's, there's special, Nancy's nodding her head.
That's, that was, you're placing a nonconformity footprint.
Right.
And even though you're.
House itself is nonconforming.
Well, we.
I don't know.
The foot. House. Is the.
But I think what, what the net said originally is the case, that Greg, he's a pretty good lawyer. He, he's done work for us. That Greg basically parsed it by saying, it's really not the house that's nonconforming, it's the nonconformity of the house. And therefore, if an expansion is not in the setback, you really have the same amount of nonconformity, which I don't agree with.
The language of their interpretation is expansion of a nonconforming dwelling outside the setback. So they're, they're interpreting it that the house is nonconforming, as the property and the house are both nonconforming.
The house itself, the footprint is not.
The, the language is nonconforming dwelling outside of this, non, expansion of a nonconforming dwelling. That was the language that they used.
But let's, let's, like, look at it maybe from a different point of view. Let's say that there are pre-zoning houses that have a nonconformity in certain elements of their interior. The width of, of something, of a staircase, the, you know, fill in the blanks, whatever it is. But that does not mean that that person could expand that house with further nonconformity. They, that the rest of the expansion would have to be compliant.
Yes.
Oh.
I don't understand the question.
The question is, what, if someone else, I think it's Margaret, or somebody asked the question, when Nancy, is, is the house nonconforming, or is its site is nonconforming? In other words, if it's nonconforming, if the house is not conforming, then shouldn't someone say that the house is not conforming in its entirety? What they're doing, the zoning commission, is sort of making a portion of the house conforming and a portion not.
No.
Right, well, I think.
The house is nonconforming.
What we have is, yeah, so every house that, that is within that setback is nonconforming.
Right.
So, you know, I think what they're, what you, what we're trying to look at is how, how does that, how do we make, well, my original question, I think we, was, how do we, how do we make a 35% work so that we can actually approve, prove some of these variances at the end of the day? So I'm not sure how, that, that's sort of the question for, you know, are we going back to the same thing where we have to follow all the old case laws in the towns? We always say at every meeting, and we have to, to follow the state's case law that goes to East Hartford, where there are quarter acre lots or whatever the thing is. There, how, how can we make these things work? And it's still, we have to decide if we have to go back to zoning and relook at this, or, or so we have more, more authority as a board to be able to approve things that make common sense for, for people with, you know, seven, 10. you know, seven, ten acre properties that happen to have a non-conforming house. Maybe, maybe they have, uh, you know, one corner of the house is within forty-five feet of the, of the, of the, of the frontline, it still makes the house kind of non-conforming, and that, that's, that, I guess that's my issue. I'm not sure if, if I'm on the same, uh, trail as everybody else, but that's kind of what I'm trying to figure out. Are we still, are we still in that position where we, we have some authority to approve things like we did in the past? And that's, I think that's the big question. Okay, we, they answered the question with the, which we were unclear of for the last year or so, is they answered the question about how we, now we no longer have things coming to us because of the lateral expansion, because, because they're, they're expanding it into, into, uh, outside the setback. But we're, we still have the key question of how do we approve something more than twenty-five percent? Without, you know, and can we?
That is the key question number one.
I mean, that's our, that's, that's the purpose of our, our board, to be, to allow, to make good common sense decision outside of, you know, thinking outside the box a little bit, how do we make that work? Because at the end of the day, we have two cases that come before us that should be approved that we can't approve. So this will eliminate, this will eliminate.
But, so, so I, I, that, go ahead, Steve.
No, I was just gonna say, that I think it's almost, you know, we're talking about size of houses. I think something compelling could be made of a house that's twelve hundred square feet. And there's really need for, you know, fill in the blanks, whatever it is. As opposed to like we were saying before, six thousand foot house, with maybe twenty-five percent more, isn't particularly visually that different. But I can't imagine what the hardship would be that you have to expand a six thousand square foot house.
Right, I think you're totally dead on, Steve, with this. It's, it's how do we make it more of a sliding scale? And how do we go back to zoning, so that we said, so twenty-five percent, it, it makes really little sense to have that with comparing houses that are six thousand to three thousand to twenty-five hundred. It's, it, that's, that's the issue, right? A hundred percent, twelve hundred square foot, and I should have a right to do more than three hundred feet, you know, and that's just, that's just the reality, you know, and that's, so that's.
So I, I, I guess I have a slightly different take on it, which is, um, Gail advises us, and we choose to, we choose to follow her advice as rigorously, or as literally as we choose. But we have discretion. And so, um, I don't, for me, this isn't a question for zoning, this is a question for us. Which is, if somebody can demonstrate a hardship, with, are we prepared, if no, if there's no, if there no, um, uh.
Neighbors or?
If, if, if the neighbors have not, um, just.
Been adversely affected.
Are, are we prepared in limited cases up to us? And I don't know that zoning has made their, their position clear. Don't increase the non-conformity, except in this, this limited case. The, any expansion, uh, uh, the point is to decrease, not increase the non-conformity.
But is the non-conformity, the whole structure, or is it just the part that's in the, that's non-conforming? In other, in other words, if somebody has a, a non-conforming structure, and they want to increase their footprint of this non-conforming structure, but not increase it in the non-conforming area, can they do that?
No, not without a variance.
But can we grant the variance? Can we grant the variance? That's the question.
Us.
Right, so that's the question. So are we willing?
Good.
It, and, and I would just say, um, what Gail said to me, which is, don't spend too much time and be careful of hypotheticals.
No, but, no.
And, and, and so, you know, I think we can have a general sense that we are prepared to, in some cases, do this. I don't know, I don't think we should be specific about when we are. The question is, what the, what is the, is there a hardship? And can they prove the hardship? And, I mean, we've learned over and over and over that every time we think we can predict what something will be, somebody comes into something we never expected. Oh, Margaret?
My question is, we do have discretion, we don't have to follow what Gail tells us exactly legally, we can, but if we think she's, if we think the opinion she's giving us also is consistent with and conforms to the case laws that we're looking at, do we still want to say, we have, you know, we, we have discretion under the present, I don't know, this present regime or whatever? Or if we, if we get a legal opinion and we look at the case law, and we don't see much wiggle room for us, can we decide we have, you know, we can, we can, we do have the wiggle room, we're going to go there? Or do we, at what point do we say we should be careful?
I think we should always be careful. I think that's our job is to be careful, but that doesn't mean that there aren't some cases where, when we understand the intent of the twenty-five percent, that there aren't some cases where, I think the last time we talked about this, we decided that there might be some cases in a town like Roxbury, where we might we might, um, approve a hardship.
But, but we just had two cases where we thought, you know, that, that the, it was very reasonable what they were asking, and we defaulted to the, uh-oh, we better not do that. Our attorney.
I think what, um, if I was to, Greg Cobb's point was an excellent point. I think we were, we were not aware of, we were not clear as, as a board about that issue, and I think this is another, this gives us another thought process. I think we can move forward and now look at things differently on the next case, uh, as, as Nanette is saying. And I think that's what we should do as a board.
I would, I would say, but I think what, what we've all been talking about is, a lot of it is the case. Do you remember, I, I forget what road it's on, it's the highway that goes from Washington through to Woodbury. There was that red house that was right on the road.
Forty-seven.
Right, and it butted, really truly a butted road. And they're actually doing construction now, you can see it going on. And, you know, here's a young couple in a house that, they weren't the kind of people that in this market are going to move up to another house, didn't seem that way anyway. And they wanted to have a child, and they wanted to put a little, something in there to accommodate that. And, you know, there was nothing in my mind that says, why shouldn't they be able to do that? But the way the cases stay, Stan, we had to hang on the fact and back.
But we did approve it.
And we approved it. I'm saying, and we approved it.
And I think that's, I think, that's an exactly an example of what we're talking about.
Right, but, but, but you see, I see the emotion of it all, is that the people on River Road, and, you know, Peter was our architect, so I, and I liked Peter, but, you know, it was like, well, but also, wouldn't it be nice if they had a porch here? And that would be sort of pleasant and nice. And then it doesn't ring the same way as the young couple with the kid, it's sort of, which is not supposed to be what the test is. But I think in our heart.
But it's not an issue, but it's not an issue of whether there, uh, it's not an issue of whether, uh, I, I think we, we, we disagreed with the woman who wanted to expand the, her, her porch, because it was a lateral. Um, and we turned it down, and we allowed her to close in an existing porch to the rear. And we turned down the porch to the side.
Right, no, no, I'm saying, but, but I think, you know, what's pathetic is that, you know, and maybe I'm just venting, that, that, you know, the, the cases, the compelling nature of the need is not really the test. You know, it really is, the hardship has to be more physical hardship, and, and not.
The, they had a very perfect physical hardship, the young couple.
See, I think it's twofold, Steve. I think it's, is the hardship exists, and then to what extent do we want to approve an expansion? And if they had wanted to, a, a much larger expansion, much more significant, we would have turned it down.
I agree.
So.
That's what I'm trying to say, I, maybe I'm being, I mean, I just was traveling, but maybe I'm not being that articulate with, all, all I'm trying to say is that, um, I think, I, so, I guess what I'm saying is, I sort of agree with this idea that we just can't go to Gail and ever decide the cases. I think we have to sort of decide the cases, exert some discretion, also, you know, obviously be cautious, but, you know.
It's, it's clear what zoning is trying to avoid is major expansion um, in, in, to old, to old houses that do not, that are non-conforming. But allow for some room for people who have legitimate needs. Um, either, for, for the reasons we've been discussing. And, and I think within that, if there is a hardship, that when a case comes to us, we exercise appropriate discretion, because we know, in that case, it met, it, it basically met what the, with the twenty-five percent was designed to, um, accomplish, except they couldn't accomplish it to the rear.
Yeah, which is why they, they gave that allowance of the twenty-five percent to the rear. Basically say, yes, the house is not conforming, because it's truly the house that's not conforming, but we don't care, you know, under those circumstances.
Care?
Yes. Well, no, I mean, I just want to say, I think, that, that they're gonna, they're gonna give you that because it doesn't really impede many things. It doesn't, you know, I mean, because it's not appointing the visuals of the house or anything else. And, and.
Just thinking, if we get, as we've done in the past, if we get applications that we would like to grant, that we think are reasonable, but the case law and our attorney and the whole world, you know, tells us, the law doesn't allow you to do it, we should send those, and we've done this in the past, send it back to zoning and saying the regulation is putting us, you know, the.
It's not zoning's job to decide whether or not there's a hardship. It's not, it's our job.
I, I don't understand, um, we're talking about, we would like discretion to allow, um, variances in cases where we feel it is a reason, you know, would be reasonable for this family on this lot, whatever. And, uh, it's not too big and, and so forth. Uh, I think, but case law, or, let's say, case law, or our attorney says, that's not what, you know, that's not what the law says. But if, but the underlying problem is, we have to follow the zoning regulation and the case law. If the zoning regulation were different, like the way they changed the twenty-five percent in the back, then we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to be the ones saying, oh, we're going to stretch, you know, we're going to, uh, stretch the envelope, we're going to go into this. We think we can do an area. We would be, we would be on very firm ground, but it, zoning is, is the one who sets the rules.
So if zoning rewrites the regs, then it doesn't come to us. I mean, I think we're, I think, I think, I, I.
I'm talking about the twenty-five percent, I'm talking about.
No, no, but that's really the point, and that's right, that's the point.
If they.
It comes down to, if it doesn't comport with zoning.
If they say it comports with zoning, then it doesn't come to us. Then John approves it.
Right, so that I'm, that's what I'm saying.
So one way or another, then you're saying we're working ourselves out of a job.
Good. Good. I mean, we're working ourselves out of a job by a means that allows more of what we're saying the town should allow. We're just saying to zoning, please allow this. As we did with Barnes, and, and as we did with the twenty-five percent, basically. Allow some. Okay, sorry.
No, I just, I, you know, if you, if you want to try to formulate something and want to take it to them, I'm, you know, I, then, then we would do it. But I, I feel like, I feel like we're saying, I feel like this is our job, not theirs.
As long, as long as we, as long as we have the discretion to do our job, I'm good with it, but from, from here forward, we're gonna, we're gonna, I think, I think Steve made the point earlier that a little bit less interpretation from Gail in every case makes our, our jobs a little bit easier, I think. As a group, I think this, this board was designed for citizens to come forth and, and look at what's brought before us and make good conscious decisions based on the hardships that are in front of us. So, I think.
Well said.
You know, and I think, if we, the, the, I think that's what we need is a board, we need to go back to doing, making good common sense decisions for the village of Roxbury, and for the town of Roxbury, and just do it that way, and, and make it work, you know, so.
Well, we can certainly, um, you know, see what, how, how we do, get, get a few cases and see how we handle them, and then if we're all disappointed in ourselves, then I'll revisit it again, and, and maybe go back to zoning. I, you know, I know I've felt very disappointed in.
Myself as well, I, I agree. I felt, uh, I felt certain cases that we didn't get through that, that were reasonable, and I think we have to really look at them all. I think that's all.
I agree.
So, then let's just agree that we're going to take these on a case-by-case basis, which is what Gail was always recommends. Um, and that, let's see what, let's see what comes to us. I think, I think there are ways to honor the intent of the zoning regs. Which, you know, I think we know what they are, both in terms of non-expansion of the non-conformity, but also that the desire to allow people who, who are living in these old houses, um, who are trying to make it work for them, um, to do modest expansions. And if they can't do it behind, then it's our job to decide whether or not we think that it's all right to do a lateral expansion. And I think that's, I think that's our job.
Well, with it, perhaps up to a point, but we don't want to be in the situation of trying to mind, mind guess and mind read zoning's intent. Um, because I have cer, I have trouble with it, uh, quite often.
Well, that's one of the big issues that has just, the, on this thing that just came, was just decided, and Gail cautioned people about trying to understand intent. And, um, and I, I guess that's a good caution that we need to, that we need to keep in, that we need to keep in mind.
Anyway, good discussion.
Here, here.
Yep, Gail?
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Okay, we're good, we're, we're ready for the next one, when it comes, maybe in three months, six months.
Margaret, you're up.
Okay. So, what we were doing, uh, when we had the application that involved the wall built within a setback, that was either a wall or a fence. And, uh, I think we were criticized, and, you know, we had a problem with it. So I went back through, and I don't know if you got my things, I went back through the zoning regulations and did a find on every mention of wall and fence, uh, because it wasn't quite clear, uh, what, what we had there, and what rules applied to it. Um, there's a good definition, by the way, of stone walls, really an exceptionally good definition. And when the, if, if an applicant were to claim that his, um, his plastic wall was a stone wall, or his, um, his plastic wall was a stone wall or his, um, he would, he would not uh get anywhere. There's a good definition of stone walls. In the question of the wall versus the fence, and their attorney pointed this out, the definition, there is, I don't know if you have my thing, there is one part of the regulations which appears to say that um that structures are exempt, but um well, the first thing seems to say that uh, where's my notes? What they, the um, what we were relying on was the under twenty point seventy-nine. The um structures that are exempt from the setback requirements are flagpoles, uh, mailboxes and fences. So um, here, fences are exempt under twenty point seventy-nine, structures that are exempt from the setback requirements are flagpoles, mailboxes, fences. Uh, and there are a couple of other things there. So it looks like the um uh, here fences are exempt, but walls are not exempt. And the, the um. We and the zoning we and the zoning, uh, John's definition relied on the um language that the um, for an exemption for that it was a wall, and as a wall, it wasn't exempt. Uh, it could be regulated because it wasn't listed as an exemption, only fences are listed as an exemption. And therefore it was a wall and it could be regulated, and John acted on that, and I, you know, I agreed. I didn't, I didn't, I mean, that he had, that he was looking at something that was or might be regulated. But when you get to the definition of fence, a fence, and there's no definition of wall, a fence is a constructed barrier of wood, stone, or any other material or combination of materials that is erected to enclose, screen, or separate an area. Therefore, you could build just about anything, including that wall that we were looking at. And and just say it's a fence, which is what their attorney said.
Which is why we approved it.
Yeah, their attorney said, this is legal under twenty point seventy-nine where fences are exempt, and and the wall that you're, the, the wall, whatever you have termed it or the applicant has termed it, meets the definition of a fence, therefore it is exempt. Now, I don't know that we, that we wanna go, I think that definition of fence, it really provides an exemption for almost any type of fence you wanted to build, you know, in the setback area all around your property. I don't know why they, uh, there are other questions as you go through and look at wall and fence and the regulations, there's some oddities. But this, just, uh, this is what tripped us up. And the, and what their attorney pointed to, what Neil Marcus pointed to, is this structure is exempt because it's a fence, and if you read the definition of fence, uh, it could be anything other than a stone wall, uh, which is well defined. So, so I would like us to request the zoning commission to take a look at this definition of fence and don't even send us anything more that has to do with fences because there are walls. Because there, any type of barrier is entirely exempt from regulation under this definition. So that that tripped us up. I didn't, you know, I didn't see it, but their attorney certainly saw it. And I, I think, um, if we ever have to consider walls and fences again, the same thing is going to arise. If it's, if it meets the definition of a fence, no matter what it's made, it has to be under six feet. If it's under six feet, no matter what it's made of, uh, or what its purpose is, it's exempt because it's a fence. So, uh, the, I, I wrote a respectful, a draft of a respectful letter to the zoning commission. Asking them to please take a look at this definition again. There is no definition of wall. There is this extremely broad definition of fence. And there is a, a good definition of stone walls. So, um, so I, I would like the ZBA to ask them to please look at that definition of fence and see is that, is that really, speaking of intent, do they really mean to exempt a barrier constructed of any materials whatsoever? Um, of, of any size, apparently, just so long as it's under six feet. By any size, I mean any length zigzag all the way around the property, it's a fence. That's what the definition says. That's what I would ask, would like zoning to take a look at and consider rewriting. Or maybe just going with an dictionary, but please define a fence that way.
What it, I, you know, I never did it, but what is the difference between a fence and a wall in the dictionary?
Well, I actually did some research on that, and it's, it's quite, it's can be quite difficult. Um, if you do legal definitions and common sense definitions, nevertheless, there's an overlap. And then there are questions like with a wall, it's a wall, like we, we decided, no, Bill said this looks like a wall. Well, it looks like a wall because it's sort of horizontal. But if you keep bringing, if, if the ratio to the base, to the height, gets smaller and smaller, you begin to get a tower or a monument. So, and then I saw examples online, is this a wall or is this a, a monument? Um, not a wall. So it's, it's quite confusing, but it does have some common features. One feature of a wall in most definitions is that it's continuous.
I, I think while also, uh.
Sounds like a, a contradiction. And one of the core parts of a definition of a fence is that it's meant to stop entry. It's like a, a fence around your garden, a fence in front of your house, it's meant to prevent entry or someone crossing. But there is no, um, uh, those are, there are no, there's no definition that would clearly um, if you wanted something to put in your regulations that you could just copy and put in your regulations. So zoning in the regulations, I mean, this was probably written long ago. They don't define a wall, they do define a fence, but their definition of fence, which is what we ran into um, is so uh all-inclusive that um that their attorney was right. This wasn't, uh, this couldn't be regulated because it was a fence and it was exempt. And I, I, uh, you know, we tripped, we tripped on that. I didn't see it. Um, their attorney saw it. And so I just think they, they ought to clarify. I just think it's a ter- a lousy definition, but this way, it's a very poor definition that can only cause problems if you're having to think about whether a walls, fences, or other barriers are regulated.
Yeah, I know, I totally agree. In other words, if you think about it, we have plenty of properties here that have stone walls around them. That's, that's, you know, commonplace in town. But, and because of deer and things, there are clearly fences on properties. Either to keep animals from coming in, to keep them from going out, whatever. To me, a wall, as, as you say, it's, it has much more substance, it's probably embedded in the ground, and it's solid. And if people started putting those around their property, I'd probably be troubled by it.
But there are, there are all kinds of fences, you know, like that are so, are solid, but that are made out of wood. You know.
Under our definition of fence in zoning, you could put up the kind of wall Steve is talking about, and it would be legal because it meets all the criteria in our definition of fence.
So the question, let, let, let me complicate this a little bit. It's not complicated enough. Both of these cases, both Greg's case and um this case with the um with the fence slash wall. Um, brought up for me and the Kava case for Gail. The process that the CEO uses to, to send things to us. So, so technically. He doesn't enter, if, if he sees something that he's sure in his mind is gonna come to Z, to ZBA, he needs to come to ZBA and requires a hardship, uh, requires a variance, he does not, they do not submit an application to him. And they just come to us. The result of that is, and this was a little puzzling to Gail, the result of that is twofold. One, I think the reason he does it is, if they have to come to us anyway, it, um, they, they don't, they, it saves them at that point from having to file uh, an application with, with zoning and therefore have to pay a permit fee, which they're gonna have to pay anyway after the variance because they're still gonna have to get a zoning permit. But, um, just to remind us, we have two charges. One is to hear um appeals to decisions, interpretations of the CEO. And then the second is hardship, is, is variances. And because John doesn't formally rule on the app, uh, on an application, we don't actually get the opportunity to then um, applicants don't get the opportunity to challenge his decisions in both of these cases. What probably should have happened is that John should have, they should have applied to John, he should have turned them down. He should have given a written reason why he was turning them down. And then they could have applied to us and said, I disagree with his interpretation. And we could have then, in the case of the wall, which is essentially what we did, but we did it in the form of a variance, is to say, we think his interpretation was wrong based on the definition of fences and um, send it back. And in, and the same thing would have been true in, in this case, is Greg was essentially disagreeing with the interpretation of the zoning enforcement officer, but we had nothing in writing. So, um, I think the issue of the fences, for example, would have been a lot cleaner if in fact we had had something and that they could have appealed to us. Which the lawyer said, said his, their lawyer said essentially, this really should be an appeal of a decision of the CEO. The CEO didn't really make a decision, or we didn't have anything in writing. So I think one of the things um we may wanna do in this process of deciding what we wanna take back to zoning is to try to get John's process more formalized. She thinks that something requires a, a variance, that he has to turn down their application and state a reason why in writing. Because we never, when somebody comes to us and says, John said, we, we need a variance. And we, and we say, why did he say that? Because I, I think you all remember, there've been many times where we've said, why is this even in front of us? So I think that these two cases, the case that Margaret is raising and the, and the, and the, and the case on Moosehorn give us reason to try to uh re-energize this other part of our job, which is to hear appeals to the decisions of the CEO. But the CEO isn't making decisions, so no, there's nothing to appeal. Margaret?
Yes, I, I completely agree, and the applicant should always be able to challenge a decision. Uh, and if it needs to be in writing, and I think you're right, it does, whatever John decides, like you do or don't need to do X or Y, he should put it in writing. And then if it's in writing, the applicant can challenge it to the appropriate place, either zoning or us or wherever. Um, and it, and it would be challenged, uh, if they believe his decision is wrong, it would be challenged as a wrong decision by the CEO rather than um, a variance is needed here. So I think that's, that's what you're saying. That the, um, we should be sure that applicants have recourse if there's a wrong decision by Z, Z, CEO, um, or they think it is, that they can appeal that decision. Uh, before we worry about whether it comes to us or whatever.
I, I would add to that. I think it's a really excellent idea because I think I, I've gotten that vibe on some of the cases a little time I've been on here. Well, the, the officer said that I, I should go to you for a variance. And I think, you know, in courts, the way it would work would be, you write, you, you basically turn it down and you write something that said, it's denied because of whatever. Now there's at least a foothold to do something. It's a really good idea.
I like it.
Well, and I think rather than, um, I know I use the word wrong, but rather than using wrong, let's just say that they disagree with his interpretation of the regs. Um, and just out of sensitivity to his decision-making process.
We, we don't have to say. Yeah.
What?
Well, what we're discussing, we don't have to say it. The applicant can challenge. And I guess what you're saying is, supposing, supposing the applicant feels that he or she has to come for a variance because that's what they were told. But what we're looking for is that when the CEO makes a decision, uh, do you need a variance or not on this, or do, do you have to go straight to CBA, do you go to zoning? They, he, that decision should be written down, and the applicant should, we, we would hope uh, understand that he can challenge, he or she can challenge that CEO decision.
So, uh, there's not an application. The problem is, at this point, in many cases, there's not an application for him to turn down because he, he doesn't, they don't, he, he says, don't bother to file, and I, I'm not sure exactly how he says it, but.
I think he says, doesn't he say, notice of violation, basically, right? And he, he saw his reason, yeah, he states his reason, so that's basically.
Case, that's right. In this case, on the, um, on the one on, on River Road, he did, he did, he did have a notice of violation. In the case of the Greg raised, he just basically went and talked to him, which is what a lot of people do. They go and talk to him, they, they go over the plans. And John says, you're gonna need a variance on this. And um, so they don't file an application at that point, and they come straight to us. And, but I think what Gail is saying is it would be probably better process if they filed the application, he turned them down, wrote why he turned them down. And then they came to us, we would know then when they were requesting, then they could either say, I just disagree with this interpretation, or, which exactly the way on a much more roundabout way it wound up doing, it would have been a much more direct way of, of just going back to zoning.
I, I would, I would totally agree with that, that, uh, that, that they should do the application, that makes a lot of sense.
So how, how would, uh, how would?
Rather than him giving, than, than him giving a verbal interpretation of what he believes it should be, right?
Would somebody, would you and Nan have a discussion with John in this case and, or how would we go about implementing this?
Thinking that, that we could maybe combine what Margaret is raising with this issue in a letter. Um, and um, use also this, the, what, what just came up, was the thing that came up on, on Moosehorn as examples of, um, I, you know, I think it, I, I think it's better if we, since John doesn't really work for us. I think it's better if we deal from our commission to their commission and let them handle it.
So with what Bill said and what we were saying, I would hope, because I think it would be simpler, that if um, the CEO. I would hope, because I think it would be simpler, that if the CEO felt that something was regulated and he tells the applicant, this is regulated, and the applicant thinks it's not. Not that they should be able to say, John, CEO, please write down, you think this is regulated. And then I'm going to appeal. I think your decision is wrong. I don't, would it be necessary then, Bill, to actually file an application? Or could they, would be simpler if the applicant could just challenge that initial ruling, which would have to be in writing. Rather than go through the application process. But that's just a question I have. Could it be done more simply? Just the ruling by a CEO is challengeable if it's written down. And it's, it really should be challenged. And you can challenge it without going through the application process. I don't know what the right answer is. I just think the other would be simpler or quicker if you could do it that way.
I would only suggest that, good, Bill, good.
Well, yeah, so I think, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, we're pretty compared to most of the, this part of the world, so to speak, the Northeast. We're pretty lean in about what we need to bring forth to these meetings. I mean, the answer is if they have to do a simple application, I don't think that's the end of the world. It might create more sort of nor, a normal procedure, you know what I mean? Just like we, we tried to do over the years with, with us verifying that they had all, everything together before the, before they, they meet with us. I think it's just more of a, a little bit of a written record. I don't think it's that much of a hardship to ask them to do an application. But they could, we could also do a, an abridged application where, you know, uh, where it's more of a verbal and a sign off that he had a, a, a discussion with the, with, with John or, you know. The, the zoning enforcement officer, if there was somebody in for John for whatever reason. But yeah, so. I guess the, I guess the answer is I don't, I don't feel like we, we overburden people in this town for, for getting stuff done.
I, I think, I think that one way or another, it has to be constructed in a way that it's a decision. Otherwise, it can't be appealed. So he has to make a decision on something.
And that can't be, it can't be, as was being suggested, in my opinion, a, like as opposed to a verbal thing, thing, well, as far as I'm concerned, you can't do this, get a variance. It's got to be a written document. It's somewhere in the process. I don't care which way. Which just says, like in one on River Road, that basically because this is not a fence and it's a wall, you have to go get a variance or.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's like, I, once again, an applicant, a, a, simple application shouldn't be that big a deal. Present it, he turns it down, and then it comes to us.
That way you keep a paper trail.
Why he's, and he should reference in his, in the decision as to why he's turning it down, such as, you know, which codes. He's considering when he's making the, the recommendation to apply for a variance, so that we know where he is coming from as well.
Agreed.
Julie? Do we lose her? So the thing on River Road, I think, happened because they didn't come in for a variance. What happened was he, he he filed a notice of violation to them. They never pulled a permit. So there was a bigger, I mean, there was also, they never pulled a permit.
Which they were wrong.
Which they were wrong, right?
Actually, because if you think about it, if it's truly a fence, they didn't have to pull a permit.
That's correct.
I think we need this fence thing more.
I believe he was, he was following the structure definitions at that point.
But he was going 12 feet above the fence, you know, so a 12-foot fence on it. He was way up too. That was the issue.
Didn't they decide that they didn't want to? I know their lawyer came later, but originally Julie, wasn't there a discussion of them appealing the decision of the CEO? And they said they didn't want to?
That is true.
And then their lawyer said that that was what they should have done.
Which is kind of what they did. It is what they, basically, they really did that, so.
It is kind of what they did.
Which is half, half of what we do, you know, which is not half, but it's more, could be more down the road. But it's part of what we're here for.
And, and in the case of an appeal from the decision of the CEO. The issue of hardship never will come into it for us. Because the hardship only comes in when they're requesting a variance. So essentially, what we found in that case, even though I think when I went back and read the minutes again, it was a little muddy. We basically found that John's interpretation was wrong. That was basically what we did.
Right, that was, that was basically, yeah.
And so, I mean, that's another, you know, in the same, in the same issue in the case on Moosehorn, is the issue of, of hardship would have never come into it if it had been an appeal to the interpretation. Because we would, because we would have just said, we disagree with his interpretation. We think Greg is right. And it would have gone back to zoning. And we wouldn't have ever deal with, with the issue of hardship. I mean, that's the good thing in terms of what zoning has decided. That's the good thing for these folks is they're not going to have to prove a hardship. If they, if, if it's outside the setback and they want to expand laterally 25%. They're going to have to get a special permit, but they're not going to have to prove a hardship. So, you know, I think, I think on that little issue, I think this is, I think the resolution on that was actually a good thing.
I agree. I'm still, I'm still, you know, I still believe we want to get back into it. But I mean, I believe that 1200, 25% to 1200 is a lot different than 25% to 6,000. And I think that, that's the only issue I have, but.
And I think that's the discretion we get to.
Yeah, so.
We get to exercise.
Yeah, I think that's, that moving forward, I agree. So we'll move, we'll leave it at that.
And I think we, I, I think we know how we feel about the, you know, 25% of 6,000 square feet versus 25% of 1,500 square feet.
Right, right.
Okay, so. Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wasn't sure because I don't, I'm not getting any indication on my screen. I just wanted to, so basically, this whole fence wall definition is going to go back and hopefully somebody's going to rewrite it and clarify it. The definitions.
So I think what I'm suggesting is we combine that and th- this other issue in one letter to zoning. And maybe, and, and then ask them to, to clarify and, or, and tell them, we're, we're happy to meet with them if they want.
Okay.
Margaret, are you okay putting them together?
Yes, I am. I was just wondering that a motion might be so we don't have to get together for another meeting. I don't know if this would be possible, but we could move that you did that, that the chairman dra- draft a letter to the zoning commission based on the requests that we voiced here. And that you, you buy dependent, and you will send the letter conditional upon it having been vetted by the members of the commissioner, there not being a problem.
Okay.
Other words, so you could go ahead and write the letter, send it to us, and, and you'd cover the two points that you're, that, that we agreed need to be discussed. Send it to us. If there's objections or, you know, a real problem, it doesn't go out. But if, if the members approve it without having, as a part of the condition of the vote here. If they approve it, we don't have to have an extra meeting. We can take the back and forth approval that you would get as chairman, as approval to send out the letter.
Was that, you, you do want to make that as a motion?
So I move that the chairman draft a letter for the zoning commission that will be sent to, that will raise two points discussed in the meeting of October 20th. One being the definition of fence and the other relating to, just, just say relating to decisions by the CEO. And that the, the letter, the, the letter, if approved by, if submitted to the members of the ZBA at, by email. And if the members of the ZBA agree that the letter reflects accurately what we requested, then the chairman will send the letter to the zoning commission.
I'm changing it to this letter will be vetted by members of the ZBA. And then upon approval, upon approval, will be forwarded to zoning commission.
Julie, do, can we find out for sure that that's, that's a process that we can take without just all, just getting on a, a two-minute Zoom call and saying we could need to, if we can do it by email.
I'm pretty sure you can, but I can actually get a definite decision from, actually, I can get it from the town clerk tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be good. I think that's a good idea, then.
As long as it's not sent out and everybody's discussing it in one big email. There's no reason why Nanette can't, almost like a telephone call list, send it to you, Bill, who then? And when you say, okay, I'm good, then you can send it to Karen, and then you're gonna have to just go down the line of who you send it to.
Oh, we can't just, I just can't send it to everybody, right?
Can't send it to anybody, everybody at once because you can't take the chance of a reply all, because that would be a meeting.
I don't, I don't think so. If you've put it in as a condition, I think, I think what I, what I said is okay, but if it's not, we'll do it by a meeting. Julie checks it and the process isn't okay, then we'll just do it at a meeting.
Karen, are you saying we should have a meeting?
Well, it sounds, it sounds to me like it might be simpler to, you know, have a, have a 10-minute meeting if there's, you know. Rather than Bill sends it to me and I send it to Margaret and Margaret sends it, you know, to Sue and then, you know.
Nanette would have to send it to everybody individually, and you would all have to respond back to her. And just not, unfortunately, if she was to send to everybody at once, that's where you get into reply all discussions that get dicey.
But then, but then when Nanette gets it, is she gonna have to start editing individually? So I guess she'll have to edit individually. So.
Yeah, I mean, it might be more problematic for her.
A revised motion. The CPA, we moved that chairman, that would start the same. That the chairman draft for the zoning commission, a letter addressing two points raised at our meeting of October 20th. One being the definition of wall, one relating to decisions by the CEO. And that the members of the zoning commission will approve. The letter will be sent condish- conditional upon members, and we want all the members of the commission. Members of the zoning commission approving the letter either by meeting or by email. So whichever, we could do it just by meeting if you want, in a special meeting. Whichever you want. I would, I would might just leave it open and say either by meeting or by email approval. But
Based on discussion with the clerk.
Yeah, because it depends what Julie comes back with, you know. So, Jim, just leave it that way and we'll do what we have to do.
And Nanette, you could also just, you know, do you want a month to work on it? Or do you feel like you want to whip it out in a week or, you know?
Well, I, I mean, I think, no, I, I, I think, you know, there's no reason why. You, I mean, I'm obviously going to consult with Margaret on the fences part. But there's no reason why we shouldn't, a, a, a week or so to do it. But then, you know, to circulate it around and I'm, I assume that then there'll be a need for a second draft. So it'll take a couple of weeks, I would think. So let's see how it goes. And if it, if it does take a couple of weeks, maybe we just do it at our next meeting.
It's not urgent. It's been a roundabout.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not, not expecting any runs on the fence applications.
I don't think so.
No fences, please.
Have an open motion. Do we want to second it?
I'll second it.
Sue, you're not seated. I can't have you second it.
Oh, right.
Bill seconds, okay. All in favor? Okay, any other business? Any other new business?
Yankees game is zero, zero.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
All right. All right. Thanks, everybody.
All right, take care, everybody.